Good evening, everyone. We're going to call to order the Stillwater City Council meeting for Monday, August 5th, 2013. You'll please stand for Pledge of Legions.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We do have one proclamation this evening. Whereas the American Cancer Society's Cancer Prevention Study III is recruiting 300,000 adults across the United States to help better understand the genetic, environmental, and lifestyle factors that cause or prevent cancer. And whereas in 2012 alone, more than 1.6 million people in the United States will be diagnosed with cancer. And whereas Stillwater has been selected as an enrollment site for this historic study that will follow participants for at least 20 years by asking them to spend no more than 60 minutes every other year updating the research team on their health and habits. And whereas Stillwater is known as a caring community with a strong ethic for volunteerism. And whereas residents have supported Relay for Life events, which raise money each year to help fund research such as this, as well as education, advocacy, and patient services for cancer survivors right here in Stillwater. And now, therefore, be it resolved that I, John Bartley, Mayor of the City of Stillwater, and the city councilors do hereby proclaim the week of August 5th in Stillwater to be Cancer Prevention Week and encourage citizens to participate in the Cancer Prevention Study III by enrolling in the study at the Relay for Life of Stillwater to be held at Payne County Expo Center on August 9th, 2013.
Do I talk this way?
Okay.
Well, as the proclamation read, this week is Relay Week here in Stillwater. Friday night is Relay for Life out at the Expo Center, a huge community event. We have a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity at this relay this year only, and that is participate in an enrollment event for the Cancer Prevention Study. This is a major nationwide study by the American Cancer Society designed to identify the causes of cancer. This is the third Cancer Prevention Study. The first began in 1950, the second recruited in 1986, and this is the third cohort. These lead to life-saving discoveries. The first CPS study, among many discoveries, was the primary piece of data that proved the link between smoking and lung cancer. The second Cancer Prevention Study proved the link between secondhand smoke exposure and lung cancer. And those two findings alone have saved literally millions of lives around the world with policy changes, prevention efforts, and those sorts of things. So we're hoping there will be similar exciting discoveries in CPS III, and we hope that Stillwater folks will come out and participate. The only eligibility criteria is that you are committed to a long-term participation, only 60 minutes every other year, that you are between the ages of 30 and 65 years of age, and have never before been diagnosed with cancer. Any of those folks are welcome to come out and participate on Friday night. And thank you so much for the proclamation.
Congratulations.
Thanks.
And that takes us to our consent docket, and we have two items on the consent docket, items A and B. Does anyone wish to remove either item?
Not at the time, sir. I move approval.
Second. Motion and a second on the consent docket. Consent docket's approved five to zero. That takes us down to public hearings. First, and the only public hearing we have is to receive input regarding requests for a specific use permit, single-family use in RTM. Sevens.
Good evening. This property is located at 724 West 10th Avenue. It's on the northeast corner of Ramsey, right here, and 10th. It's circled in the red. The property is zoned RTM, two-family and multifamily residential, as is the rest of the block, except for this one lot, right here, and it is zoned RMI, multifamily intermediate. The property to the west is zoned public, and that's in the blue, and the zoning on the south is RSS, small lots, single-family. If you can see, on the underlying aerial, there is a house shown on here, but that house has been demolished. The applicant is requesting an SUP, specific use permit, in order to replace that house. I believe he's purchased a house that he wants to move in on that property. Findings include that the RTM zoning district does allow single-family residences with an SUP, and the surrounding neighborhood consists of mainly single-family homes with a few duplexes and multifamily structures. Are there any questions?
Questions, staff?
Not at the time, sir.
Thank you. Thank you. Did we get good notice on this? I'm sorry. Did we have good notice?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. All right, so we will open this up for public hearing, and there are no requests to speak in favor or against, so we will close the public hearing. Sevens, do we have a planning commission recommendation?
Yes. At its regular meeting on July 16th, 2013, the Planning Commission voted six to zero to accept staff findings and recommend that the city council approve the specific use permit as presented.
Any questions, staff? Is there a motion on this recommendation?
Mr. Mayor, I would move approval.
Second. Motion, second to approve Planning Commission recommendation. And that is approved five to zero. And that takes us down to general orders, the capital improvement plan. Mr. Galloway?
Yeah, I think I'll step down here and have a couple of slides, maybe helpful. Our last council meeting, the CIP Committee, presented a recommended report to the council, which was a combination of some of the projects that the CIP Committee had internally identified and coordinated with our Stillwater group and identified some other community projects that were more of a quality of life and presented a package. And at that meeting, you also requested that I bring to you a recommended financing plan. Before we talk about how to finance it, I think we've got a couple of pieces missing I'd like to talk about a little bit, and that is a little bit of a description of the project and what the price tags are. And then when you want to know what the price tags are, we'll talk about how to finance First of all, what I will do is I'll kind of review very quickly what was contained in these packages of projects that were recommended by the CIP and give you a little description of what the price tags are expected to be. Throughout this, I use a couple of terms that are not official, Package 1, because there were three, what I consider, packages of projects that were discussed. And Mr. Weaver also took the liberty of talking about, this is Chapter 1, and I think it was a very fitting term, and I've latched on to that. And in doing so, the reason that he used that terminology, I believe, is that both the city's CIP Committee and the our Stillwater group have identified literally dozens of capital needs that our community will face over the next multiple years. We obviously can't afford to do them all at once. And so to put together a package of priority projects that were recommended in an affordable package is Chapter 1. Chapter 2 and Chapter 3, as we go forward, will identify and include those other projects. Package 1 is what I refer to as the Parks Development and Redevelopment Package, which contains two components. One is the Sports Field Complex. That would be a centralized complex of fields on one parcel of property that would have 16 to 18 softball and baseball fields eventually. The target is to have 16 soccer fields. There would be mutual parking facilities, mutual concession facilities, mutual facilities throughout the park. The fields would be partially completed in phases, in lighted fields. The total project someday could exceed 20 million. But again, in looking at a five-year chapter of our capital improvements, we think a project, we have cost estimates to prepare the site of all those proposed fields, develop parking, develop the basic concessions and restrooms, and develop the vast majority of these parks in the first phase over the first five years is what is envisioned. That has a price tag of $15 million. The projects may come in at 14, 5, maybe 15, we don't know yet, but with the approval or authorization of 15 million, it would be the cap on the first five years of developing the park, and it's possible it could be completed with that price tag. Second component, and what I call the Parks Development and Redevelopment, the first part is a development of a new sports park. Second part is a redevelopment of Boomer Lake Park. On the southwest corner of Boomer Lake Park, it's envisioned that there would be a kind of state-of-the-art amphitheater for performances, large and small. The area would be terraced and resurfaced to accommodate large numbers of people or a small number with a performance stage and the typical design of an amphitheater facility, performing area. In conjunction with that, there would be new parking facilities, and also adjacent to that, on the actual lakefront itself, is what we're referring to as a boardwalk. That's more than just the surface that you walk on. It's an atmosphere. It's to develop the southwest corner of the lake shore as a very recreation and entertaining, friendly area of our park. It's envisioned that we would see the development of places to eat, ranging from hot dogs and tacos and ice cream cones to being able to sat down on the waterfront at a nice restaurant and having a nice seafood steak or chicken dinner overlooking the lake. Those are all parts of that concept that would develop there. To prepare all that property, to build the amphitheater, get the shore of the lakefront developed and ready for developers to locate on it would be approximately $5 million. That's the first package that the CIP Committee recommended. Second package is public safety. As we've talked about, as our population grows, and our population grows in different directions, the existing fire stations do not have the response coverage area that's ideal to where the people are today. We know that we're going to have to have ultimately a new fire station on the east side with the growth transit projected, that we'll probably need to build that in the next six to 10 years. But even before that, we have found that Station 2 on campus at the corner of Knoblock and University is our oldest station by far. But with the development of our new stations, we began to overlap coverage. With the growth of the community and the congestion, that area response time is a little difficult out of there. Plus, we are losing some coverage area by growth. The ISO insurance rating authorities who were here and have looked, have recommended we consider as our first station would be to relocate Station Number 2. We've also done some studies, the fire chief has commissioned some studies, to look at response times and ideal locations of stations, and relocating Station Number 2 is the primary concern. The location would be moving westward, not to the far west, but we envision this station moving somewhere along Western Avenue between 6th and McElroy, and that general vicinity. No specific site to be worked out. The construction of that station is $3.8 to $4 million. In this particular financing plan, I have $3.8. Second component of the public safety package would be, when we construct that new station, we are going to be at a point where we need to replace or add an additional fire pumper engine, so that's a half million dollars for that. Our police department vehicle fleet, we are operating on kind of an old antiquated system, in my opinion, where we have a very small fleet of police vehicles that are in use 24 hours a day, and we simply switch officers in those cars. It's extremely hard on vehicles to run them on a 24-hour basis. We do maintain them, we do get the full life out of them, but there are limitations. When we need, in an emergency situation, to have more officers in emergency, we have limited number of vehicles. Studies have shown that if you equip your fleet with enough vehicles, that each police officer is assigned to a vehicle, and they're responsible for that vehicle. You can greatly reduce your annual maintenance budget, you can greatly reduce the other costs, you also have more visibility in the community and greater ability to respond to emergencies in greater numbers. The problem is the capital investment to once get that fleet built up. The advantage, when you once have the full fleet, your annual replacement cost of vehicles is no greater than it is today, but you do have the abilities of having a greater-sized fleet and assignable vehicles. That was part of this recommendation. To implement that over a five-year period would take $2.3 million. That would include the cost of the vehicles, plus the safety equipment, the sirens, and the lights, and the radios, and so forth. We have done a lot in the last 10 years in improving the communications for public safety and emergency throughout the community with Wi-Fi, with computers, in police cars, and all of our fire equipment. There are still limitations to that system. You know, there's life safety issues and time response issues, when we can access not just voice communication, but access data by computer throughout all of our city with our safety equipment and our emergency personnel in times of disaster, in times of major crime investigations, crime response, emergency responses. We have made significant investment. We think another $900 to $1 million invested in that system would significantly improve that data communication for our emergency services. So that's what we're calling Package 2, Public Safety. Package 3 is transportation funding. Again, transportation generally we think of as our streets and roads. As we looked at transportation this time, the transportation is a more inclusive term. When we talk about transportation in these packages, we're talking about a package that includes maintenance of existing streets, replacement of existing streets, future expansion of streets, and sidewalks, and the repair of sidewalks, and the establishment of bike trails, and bike lanes, and bike signage, and pedestrian crossings, and pedestrian trails, and the Cameoka Trail. All forms of transportation, if our community, is covered in this package. So the term is broader than streets. The street portion is by far the big gorilla in terms of gobbling up the money, because it's the most expensive, but this is addressing all transportation needs. Street and road annual repairs, traffic signal and signage replacement, trails maintenance and expansion, bike trails, bikeway maintenance, pedestrian traffic accommodations such as slope curb cuts on sidewalk construction, street capacity enhancements to accommodate new growth. Collectively, we've worked very closely with our Transportation Director and our Planning Department since I've been here over eight years. When I came, they were finishing the Stillwater Transportation Enhancement Plan, which looks at the need in the future for expanding the capacity to handle more traffic with our growth. That's what we're calling quantity of transportation. The other aspect we've looked at is the condition of our existing streets, and that's our pavement management system. And that program is designed not to add lanes and not to build new streets, but to continually correct the degraded quality that we have in our existing streets, to bring them to standards, to invest where it is most efficient in that street repair, to keep our overall average street conditions at acceptable levels. Those numbers fluctuate. Mr. Peak's, Dr. Peak's presentation to the council, we have easily seen that it could use as much as $7 million a year simply for maintaining the quality of streets. Realistically, with his last presentation having a budget of somewhere in the neighborhood of $3.5 billion per year, if properly managed and addressing street deterioration where it is most cost-effective, we believe a budget of $3.5 to $4 million a year for that area could sustain our street quality. We also know we need another $3.5 to $4 million to address expansions and quantity and new lanes, as well as the other aspects of pedestrian and bicycle transportation. This is a different kind of a package. It doesn't have a price tag to say, here's a one-time cost for our streets, let's go build them and forget it and do something else. This number is not a project cost. This is an annual need. We need $8 million this year, and next year, and the next year, and the next year, and the next year. And that number will escalate as costs go up and other factors as well. But in today's dollars, that's $7.5 to $8 million annual need to maintain the quality of our transportation system. So that's, I wanted to give you those three packages described that way for those who didn't understand the packages that we're talking about and didn't know what the price tags were that were being contemplated. So now I can talk about how do you finance a $20 million package for parks and redevelopment, and a ongoing $7.5 million need for transportation, and a $7.5 million Package 2 project for public safety. Capital improvement financial needs, again, in this summary, $20 million for the parks development and redevelopment, $15 for the sports complex, $5 for Boomer Lake Amphitheater and development, public safety is $7.5 million. I described transportation, starting today, $7.5 to $8 million need, but an annual ongoing need. So to do a financing plan, I looked at the available sources to the city, the sales tax, that's the only tax really that we have on a regular basis. We could charge fees. Some facilities have a fee structure that helps repay for facilities. Property tax is something we seldom use, but we have the ability to use property tax if the voters approve it to finance major capital improvement projects. And grants. The grant world is pretty dry right now. I think there may be some future grant possibilities to relate to some of these projects if they're once approved, but at this point, we don't know of any concrete numbers to plug in for There's pros and cons of those. I don't think, you know, looking at the cost of these projects, I don't think that they lend themselves very well to a fee structure that would cover the cost. We're talking about youth and adult recreational sports at the sports complex. Any fees that may be charged for that normally will cover the cost of operation, but certainly not the retirement of the debt. There needs to be another source for that. Public safety, we don't charge for police calls and fire calls, all of them. We charge for some fire calls, but that's traditionally not a fee-based service. And streets, as far as that goes, I think toll booth would be highly unpopular in the city. So I've kind of ruled out fees in this plan. Let's take a look at what I have looked at. I've been trying to match up, those three sets of projects have different characteristics. You know, that first package, the parks, you know, those ballfields are going to be there for 50 years, hopefully, if they're built, or longer. The amphitheater will exceed all of our lives being there on the lake, and so we're talking the long-term real estate capital types of investment. I think those projects will lend themselves better to a longer-term type of investment or financing. In fact, I think they would be well-suited to a general obligation bond, a 20-year general obligation bond. That would spread the cost out over 20 years to the taxpayer on our property tax, and I'll talk a little bit about why I chose that in a few minutes. I think the public safety package also would be a good candidate, because it's a one-time cost for those fire stations, the fire truck, and the police cars. However, that's not all, those aren't 50-year-life projects. The fire station is. But I think it would not be prudent to finance vehicles and fire trucks with a 20-year bond, because you'd still be paying on them after they're used up, and that's not good. But those types of equipment do have such a life that I think a 10-year bond is highly appropriate for $7.5 million for public safety. The transportation one is a little different. Again, it doesn't have that one-time project cost. We have to identify an annual recurring revenue, and we only have two, our utility rates and our sales tax. Our utility rates, fortunately, are structured to take care of our utilities. Our utility rates currently are in place that will replace our water system, our sewer system, our electric components without additional tax. It's financed. We've gone over that several times, so that's separate. So that leaves the city with any recurring revenue is sales tax. And most of you know we currently have a halfpenny sales tax temporary for streets. But I still believe that sale tax would be the best vehicle for transportation, and I'll give you a little bit of detail on that. Let's talk about property tax just a little bit and why I chose it. There's a lot of detail on this page, and I'll simplify it. This is from the county assessor's website. You can look there. The reason I pulled this up is because I wanted to quickly give everybody a quick review on how property tax is dealt with in Payne County. And this is the heart from that last sheet that I showed you. We talk about net assessed value. Net assessed value is the value of property that's used to base the calculation of property tax. This example, if you had a $100,000 property or a $100,000 home, the county, that's the market value, the county would apply an assessment ratio, which is 11.4%, and multiply, so the assessed value is $11,400. And if you apply for home sit exemption and subtract 1,000, the net assessed value of that $100,000 property would be $10,400. That's the number that we'll use, or the county uses, to calculate your taxes. As a footnote, all of the properties inside the corporate limits of Stillwater right now, collectively, the whole nine yards, every piece of property that's taxable inside the city has a grand total tax assessed, net assessed value of $268 million. Now, that was for the tax year 2012 that ended last December. That's the most recent year I have data for. Those are important numbers, and I'll show you why. Now, I'd like, I'm not sure that everybody knows what happens to your property tax, and I think we need to look at that as well. Currently, again, the last tax year, 2012, if you own property in Stillwater, the county calculated that net assessed value of your property, and then they applied a tax rate of 100.33 mils of tax. And a mil is equal to a thousandth of a dollar or a tenth of a penny. So they simply multiply times your assessed, net assessed value to determine what your taxes are. Now, the reason I'm explaining that is because when I give you a financial plan, I'm going to suggest some new millage rates be at least offered to our voters, and I want you to understand what those mean. Now, here's where your taxes are currently going. When you pay 101 mils, which is about, on your taxes, 64 mils are about, and it just so happens, since our total millage is 101, these are almost percentages. About 64, 60% goes to Stillwater Public Schools, 16.43 mils goes to Payne County, 15.7 mils goes to Meridian Technology Center, and 4.9 mils go to the City of Stillwater. We currently have that small millage, the building that we're standing in here, the remodeling of City Hall and the addition of the police building was financed with a general obligation bond, and it was refinanced. We have about seven years left on that bond, and that's the only general obligation bond we have. That 4.9 mils will continually get smaller and smaller. Unlike when you mortgage a home, normally, you have equal payments throughout the life of the home. When we borrow money through a bond, we normally make larger payments in the beginning and the millage rate gets smaller and smaller towards the end of the indebted period. So that 4.9 will go completely away in seven years, but between now and seven years, it will get smaller. But that's proportionally what happens to your property tax. So in looking at these, and looking at, back at what I suggested on the 20-year and the 10-year, this is a little bit of a busy diagram, a lot of information, but let me just summarize, and we'll get this out in more clear forms later on. I talked to municipal finance services, they are our financial advisor in city financing plans. They've looked at the bond market and gave me these projections. If we were to, if the voters were to approve a 20-year, $20 million bond issued for the parks package, we, we believe that the interest rate, starting in January, is projected to be around 3.7. If that were to be approved, what that would be, on the, over that 20-year term, the average mil rate would be 5.21. If you have a $100,000 home, that's $4.51 a month is what that would cost. You know, if you look at that on an annual basis, $54 a year to fund 30-some-odd sports complex fields and a complete redevelopment and amphitheater of the southwest corner of Boomer Lake, seems rather affordable to me. Looking at the public safety package, and again, I would suggest it be 10 years, that seven and a half million, because it's a shorter term, we could get a more favorable bond rate, possibly 2.3%. If that were, it's at the bottom of the chart, over the 10-year period, the average mil rate would be 3.48, or about $3 a month on a $100,000 home. Again, $36 a year on a $100,000 home for a new fire station, a new fire engine, and a fleet of 50-plus police vehicles. Again, that seems like a relatively small price. What would that do to your, to our total taxes? Going back to the chart I showed you before, if the school tax stayed at 64 mils, and the, the county and Meridian State is 16 and 15, even with both of those millages added to your property tax, the total millage to the city is still only 13. And you have to remember that the four point at the bottom is getting smaller. So probably by the end of 14, I'm, I'm guessing that total would be closer to 12 instead of 13.5. But again, I'm thinking 13.5 mils to continue to pay the balance of this building that we're in, to add the development of the parks and the ball fields, to add public safety appears to me to be a relatively affordable program. Now, I was having trouble getting ready for this presentation, and I, I know why, and I've got to say why. It's really difficult for Dan Galloway to get up and ask you to suggest we have more taxes. That's not my style. But we have a case here where we have not been paying much taxes for capital in our community. And if we want the cap, we want this community to move forward with some enhanced quality of life, like the sports complex, like our own Riverwalk, so to speak, at the corner of Boomer Lake. Those valuable quality of life have to be paid for, and I think this is a fair way to pay for it. Looking at sales tax, we currently have 3.5% in Stillwater. I wanted to look at what other cities around the state are doing. This is, not, I, I struck Oklahoma City and Tulsa from this chart. The rest are 17 largest cities in the state, not including those two. And I looked at their sales tax rate, some of them are as low as three, some go as high as 4.12 in Lawton, Yukon's at 4%, Muskogee's at 4%, several, Edmonds at 3.75, and some of those cities are talking about some sales tax to add on to that for some of their projects. So I would say that we are not in the top sales rate, nor are we in the bottom. We're probably a low average on that. It was interesting to look at how much sales tax is generated per capita. Of those seven cities, the average sales tax collected per capita is $518. In Stillwater, we're a little ahead of that, 536 per capita is collected. What's more interesting is to convert this to what the actual retail sales per person. Looking at our population, the average man, woman, and child in, in Stillwater spends $15,000 on things that have sales tax on them. But that's not an accurate number, I don't think. I don't, I think our residents probably paying something closer to 10,000 per person in taxable sales. The reason for that is look at the thousands and thousands of people that are visiting our community every day. Look at, for the university and for other things, look at the game day traffic during the fall and during the basketball season, the student visitors, the parents visiting. Those people spend a ton of money here. They're helping us with our sales tax. It's another reason why I look at sales tax when I'm looking at transportation. Those visitors who come and drive on our streets and put all the traffic on it, they can stop and eat and help pay for those streets through the sales tax. Again, our, our rate is currently 3.5, but a half a penny, remember, is a temporary street and roads tax that the voters approved. It expires in two years, 2016. The money that will be collected in 15 and 16 are already committed to pay for projects we've already built in the streets. Now, I, it was good to have those, that temporary fund, but again, it's going away, and we know that we need twice that much money on an annual basis to keep our heads above water in the streets. I would recommend that we consider adding a half to that existing half and making it more longer-term, and I'll address that in my recommendations. But that's kind of the background. What I'm recommending to the council this evening, we have spent two years looking at this financing for various projects, not the specific ones that you recommended two weeks ago, but those projects among others. I pulled up some notes this morning from 2011. We were looking at these same issues. Interest rates have gone up and down since then, and it changes a little, but the concepts are the same. So I would recommend that the council, again, these are not things that the council cannot oppose the tax. I can't create the fees or the taxes to do this, but we can put the questions before the voters of Stillwater. And if the people of this community would like to see these improvements and are willing to pay 30 or 40 or 50 dollars a year on their taxes, I think we could have some wonderful projects. So I'm recommending that you call an election to do three things. Have three questions on the ballot. One, to ask the voters to approve a 20-year GO bond for $20 million for the park development package. Secondly, a question, ask the voters to approve a 10-year GO bond for 7.5 million for public safety, and for, would ask the voters to approve a permanent one-cent sales tax dedicated to transportation in Stillwater that will replace the existing half cent. So the net result is asking the voters to approve a half-cent increase in our sales tax to fully fund our streets, sidewalks, bicycling, pedestrian transportation plans. That in a nutshell is the recommendation. I've got a couple of other recommendations because of timing. I think interest rates are going up, or could be going up. The needs are here today, they're not going to get any less. I think we need to do this post haste, as soon as we can get this set and start a campaign to allow the public to become totally educated about these projects so they can make an intelligent decision. The earliest you could have a municipal election for this purpose would be November the 12th, the general election. The city council, if you choose to do that, would have to notify the election board by resolution no less than 60 days prior to that, which would be early September. I would recommend that you go ahead and instruct legal counsel to prepare the resolution to call that election at your August 19th meeting and not wait till September. I know that's only a three or four weeks difference, but until you formally decided to set an election by resolution, I, I think it would be a little bit premature for us to go to the, for anyone who's interested in this project to start trying to promote the projects in the public until it's actually, we know they're going to have that opportunity. So I think to make the commitment to get this on the ballot as the earliest time would be my supplemental recommendation in this project. Given that, I would ask questions about that election date and others. Interesting election date.
It is kind of a unique election day, didn't it?
Yes. We won't get that date again for another thousand years or something like that.
Anybody have questions for Mr. Galloway?
It's not a question, but it's a comment that I'd like to respond to. In looking at all of this, and looking at the fact that the sports complexes and the other, the economic development impact is what I'm getting to, is that our sales tax will likely increase if we can offer more quality of life and more benefit to the people who are coming into Stillwater.
Absolutely.
I know that that will offset some of the costs because as our sale tax goes up, that's going to help us.
Now, I, it's, it's an absolutely critical comment, and I appreciate that. There's, there's a lot of details about what these projects can do for our community that I think was a little premature for me to get into too much of that tonight. But there's, there's, there are direct and indirect financial benefits from these projects to this community. There will be some jobs created if these projects are to go forward. There's going to be additional visitors to our community because of these additional attractions, who are going to spend money here. So this is going to be, could be a very profitable venture for our economy and our community as a whole. So, anyway, I appreciate your time, and my recommendation, you know.
Mr. Galloway, something that I might ask, I, I, it's been a while since I've been in civics class, but a general obligation bond, assuming that it passed in November, does that make that money available immediately and we functionally begin construction? Or is there, like, still phasing and then over a period of time?
If that were, were passed in November, the city, that becomes a, a legal obligation that, what the voters are actually saying is, we're authorizing the city council to borrow up to that amount by the sale of bonds. And when they are sold or borrow the money, calculate the payments on the debt and apply those to the property tax. And that's the numbers that I showed you. So if it were passed, that's, in November, we could actually structure the financing of the bonds and start the projects as soon as we had design and were ready to go out for bid on construction. That money would be available through the bond buyers. And because a general obligation bond gives us a legal obligation to pay those debts back if we borrow that money. So it's a really smooth transition. We don't have to wait for years of collecting it. It's something we can do immediately, and the collections will be projected out over 20 years in the future.
Thank you, sir.
Any questions? I, I had a question. On the, the charts that you had, the, the graph you had that described between school, county, VOTEC, and city, on that, on that graph, were those calculations based just on inside-city limits property?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
These are the taxes applied inside the city of Stillwater, if you're in the school district. Well, residents inside the city limits of Stillwater are taxed for all of these entities, the public schools, the county's operation, Meridian Technologies. Now, if you live outside the city, you wouldn't have the 4.9. And depending on what school district you live in outside the city, it will be different. There are some areas inside of our county that have a total mil rate of almost 106. Ours is 101. So we don't have the highest property tax in the county. Some other areas of the county that have higher taxes.
What, what got my attention, the, the, is it a fair statement that, on that chart where it shows Payne County at 16.4-ish?
Yes.
That, that's their mil rate countywide? Is that correct?
Yes.
So every piece of property in Payne County, 16.4 mils, is going to fund the county?
Wherever you live in, in the state, in the county, yes.
What we're talking about is only properties inside our city limits.
Other questions? So in summary, I would recommend a 20-year, $20 million GO bond question to the voters, a 10-year, seven and a half million public safety question to the voters, and a permanent penny sales tax for transportation question to the voters. And would recommend that you adopt that financing plan, and would also recommend that you instruct legal to prepare the proper resolution for the election. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. That's a lot of information, guys. Just kind of recap, it was last month that we kind of decided, this is what we want to do. And we asked Mr. Galloway to come back with, okay, this is what we want to do, but how do we, how could we pay for it? And so that's what tonight was about. I was, I was very impressed with the structure of the proposed debt as to the type of project. I think those lined up, those worked well together, is probably the best way to put it. Type of projects, type of debt, that, that, those, was jived. Any other comments?
Very well put together. I think it, I think it was, it was clear. Definitely gives us a roadmap. I know that was a term that you had used, was a roadmap to, to get us there. Chapter, I think, was another good term. We could debate in perpetuity what projects need to be taken up first, but I'm prepared to start somewhere. And I think this kind of covers, you know, we're looking at streets, we're looking at Cameoka Trail, we're looking at the fire department, we're looking at new development for economic opportunities. I could sit up here and debate for the next six months where we should start. But I think given as much time as we've all taken on the subject, as much time as staff has taken, I'm comfortable with the scope as it's written. That, that's my two cents. I'm, I'm comfortable with it.
I make a motion to instruct council to prepare a resolution for the August 19th meeting. Am I covering everything?
To call for an 1112 election.
Second.
And so that recommendation was the three different questions as proposed?
Yes.
City attorney to do the need, get those resolutions ready for August 19th.
Is that something you guys can do?
Yeah, we'll have them ready for the August 19th.
Don't want to ask you for something you can't do yet, so. Okay. All right, we've got a motion and a second to proceed down that path with those recommendations. Any other comments?
I think the beautiful part, we'll see, we will take a measure of the will of the people of Stillwater. If this is what they want and the direction they want to take, I'm honored that I have a part in the process.
All right, let's vote on that motion. That motion passes five to zero. All right, that takes us down to ordinances, and we have one ordinance on first reading, ordinance 3236, and ordinance amending chapter 23, land development code, article six, land use classifications, division five, industrial districts, amending section 23-160 IL light industrial district.
I move, we accept ordinance number 3236.
Second.
Motion accepted on ordinance 3236. That passes five to zero, takes us down to miscellaneous items. Regret?
Yes, sir. I have a request for executive session pursuant to 25 OS 307, section B subsection four, for the purpose of confidential communication with the city attorney regarding workers' compensation claim filed by Brian Porter. Depending on the city attorney, the public disclosure of this matter will seriously impair the ability of the city council to proceed with this claim and/or conduct investigation... the ability of the city council to proceed with this claim and/or conduct investigation and/or prosecute a defendant resulting litigation or proceeding in the public interest.
Thank you. Anything else?
No, sir.
Galloway?
Oh, nothing particular. On a somber note, I would remind everyone that our chief financial officer, Marcy Lamb, formerly Alexander, lost her mother this weekend. So I would ask everyone to keep her and her family in thoughts and prayers as they go through this tough time.
Any miscellaneous items from the council?
I'd like to commend the city manager and staff for putting the package together.
I agree.
Who's got radio tomorrow? Someone does. I'll look it up and I'll let you know who I've got on the schedule, so.
I've got it Wednesday.
You've got it Wednesday. Yeah, we'll have, be on Bill Vanessa's show tomorrow at 8:15 on 780 AM. We'll figure out who that is. And then I'll be on triple play radio tomorrow, 7:30. So lots of good sharing of what's going on tonight. Anything for upcoming meetings? It's going to take us down to appointments. We've got quite a few appointments. Patty, if you'll make sure I don't skip any, thank you. Okay, we have two vacancies on the airport authority. I would nominate Russ Tubner to fill the first vacancy.
Second.
Got a motion and a second on the nomination for Russ Tubner. That nomination is approved five to zero. And for the second vacancy, I would nominate Jerry Franklin.
Second.
Motion and a second on appointing Jerry Franklin. Approved five to zero. On Board of Drainage Appeals, Dr. Rice's term has expired. I would nominate him to be reappointed.
Second.
Motion to second to reappoint Dr. Rice. That is approved five to zero. On Building Trades Board, Kyle Kelty's term has expired and I would nominate Kyle Kelty to be reappointed.
I'll second that.
I guess that's under the mechanical section. That is approved five to zero. On Planning Commission, Trey McCune's term has expired, so I would nominate Mr. McCune for reappointment.
Second.
Motion secondary point, Trey McCune. Approved five to zero. There is one vacancy and I would nominate Lori Crosby to fill that vacancy.
Second.
That is approved five to zero. Okay, on Convention Visitors, it's, again, we have a couple of terms that have expired. Willie Baker, Mark Gunkel's terms have expired. I would nominate Mr. Baker, Mr. Gunkel for reappointment.
Second.
Motion secondary point, Baker and Gunkel.
I'll support any motion that'll get more work out of Mr. Gunkel.
And then I would nominate Matt Hall for the other vacancy.
Second.
Motion and a second to appoint Matt Hall. Sorry, sir? And he's appointed five to zero. On Sister Cities, we have two vacancies. One is the student representative and I would nominate Jessica Yen to serve in that role as student representative to Sister Cities. That is approved five to zero. And then a vacancy on the non-student representative role, I would nominate Carolyn Confer. Did I give them all, Patty? Wonderful, okay. Okay, we, we've got a executive session, but we're going to...
Do you have your council committees?
Oh, yeah, they're there at the bottom. I forgot what I was doing. Okay, kind of to clean up what, how we're, how we're organized. We seem to have had these ad hoc committees that got started as ad hoc, but have either been around for forever, so they're not really ad hoc, or we just don't need them anymore and they don't really do anything. So of all those things that we've done and appointed people to, I would suggest, and they're on the agendas of the appointments, GH and I, I would suggest that this is how we kind of clean us up on how we're organized and that we have land development code, that's just a standing committee. Get rid of that ad hoc in front of it. That's something we'll be dealing with for forever. Same with capital improvement. That's not something that's going to go away. That just needs to be a standing committee for us. And then also for appointments to our communications and coordinating with SGA, that's something that we need to have in place. It's not ad hoc, it's not temporary. And I think that if we flip to this type of structure, it very much points to really where our values and priorities are. This is what we do, this is how we work, this is where we need people with attention outside of these meetings and these agendas. So I would suggest that we go with this type of structure. And this isn't so much something that we need motions and, you know, chisel and stone, but this is how I'd suggest that we put this together. And what, what I would suggest, at least for, you know, you know, I guess, I guess come spring, we know we've got to change with term limits. So for now, what I would, what I would, is it nominate, suggest, ask for agreement? What is the right way to do this?
I defer to the attorney, but I believe that they're mayoral appointments to committees.
Yes, if you want to strike the name ad hoc and make them send to committees, you can do that.
Strike. So what, what I would like to do is I'd like to have on the land development committee, I would like to continue that with me and Council Weaver. We've got, we're working hard with that land development code and we've got the experience there. So I'd like to appoint you and I'm not asking.
Okay. All right.
Guess you got that.
Yeah, that's a hard one to, to get there and we're really working on it. And while we're working through this beginning, this first chapter of the, our Stillwater, the capital improvement plan that we're talking about, I would, I would ask Council Weaver and Vice Mayor to continue on the capital improvement while that, while we're getting this kicked off. You guys have got us up to this point, I'd ask you to continue as we're getting through this first chapter. I will ask that one.
She's glad to do so.
Okay. And then I would like to ask Council Scott and Council Noble if you guys would serve with, as liaisons with us and SGA. And I know we don't have that worded right because I know SGA's changed their term for that committee, but we'll, we'll get that figured out. Would you guys serve on that committee?
The Honorable.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor.
Wonderful, thank you. Okay. We're now going to recess the city council meeting and move into the Stillwater Utility Authority meeting and call that to order. And the first item on that docket is the approval of minutes, the consent docket, approval of minutes of June 24th.
So moved. Second.
The motion and a second to approve the consent docket. And that is approved five to zero. And that's going to take us down to general orders.
Mr. Lauren Smith.
Yes, sir. Good evening, Lauren Smith, Generation and Transmission Division Manager. Tonight, I'm here to request approval of the power purchase and sell agreement with Grand River Dam Authority. On October 1st, 1987, the SUA began purchasing wholesale electricity from GRDA. The original 15-year contract was extended 10 years in 2002. This contract remains in effect until canceled by one year notice by either party. There are two, two public power authorities in the state of Oklahoma. GRDA is the largest, followed by the Oklahoma Municipal Power Authority or OMPA. The SUA is GRDA's largest municipal customer and is the second-largest municipally-owned electric utility in the state of Oklahoma. What makes the SUA unique in both cases is that we own and operate our own power generation resources to offset purchase power costs. Due to the age of the city's power generation resources and the scheduled implementation of the Southwest Power Pool's integrated marketplace, it became evident that the city would either need to update or replace its current generation resources or get out of the electric generation business. Because owning and operating an electric generation in Stillwater has been very beneficial from a financial and reliability perspective, it was determined that the best course of action would be to investigate the building of a new power generation station. In the spring of 2012, the idea of building a new power generation station in Stillwater was pitched to GRDA and OMPA. OMPA was in the process of building a new power generation station in Ponca City, so they were not very excited about partnering with the SUA to build another new power generation station in Stillwater. However, GRDA expressed strong interest in partnering with the SUA. A study was commissioned to determine if a new electric generation station would be economically feasible. The study was completed in January of 2013 and the results indicated that there is a significant benefit for the SUA to build a new 50-plus megawatt power generation station to replace the existing steam generation units. Following completion of the study, negotiations for a new power purchase con, agreement with GRDA began. After six months of negotiations, we have come to a tentative agreement. The tentative agreement is based on the uniform contract between GRDA and their other municipal customers, but it has been customized for Stillwater's situation. Some highlights of the agreement are, the agreement will be, be effective from September 1st, 2013, through May 31st, 2042. The SUA will be a full requirements customer, which means that the SUA will purchase all electricity from GRDA. GRDA's rates are governed by the, by Oklahoma statutes, which require that the rates to be set on a cost-of-service basis. The agreement allows for the SUA to own and operate electric generation resources. GRDA will purchase all power and energy generated by the SUA. The purchase will be in the form of a capacity payment and an energy payment. The capacity payment will be made monthly and will be based on the physical characteristics of the generation units and their availabilities. The, the energy payment will be made monthly whenever the SUA is dispatched to generate. The combination of the capacity payment and energy payment is expected to be greater than the cost to own and operate the generation resources. The margin can be used to offset the direct cost of purchasing wholesale electricity. The proposed agreement contains many benefits to the SUA, but most of all, GRDA remains the lowest cost option for the purchase of wholesale electricity. Other than being able to purchase wholesale electricity at the lowest available price, a significant benefit of the proposed agreement is the provisions to continue to own and operate generation resources and to replace those resources with twice the generation capacity. For the existing generation resources, the capacity payment is estimated to be approximately $1.1 million on an annual basis. If the current generation, if the current generation assets are required to generate electricity, GRDA will make a monthly energy payment based on the amount of electricity generated that will cover the operating cost of the generation. Based, based on an approximate 56-megawatt high-efficiency internal combustion engine power station, the capacity payment is estimated to be approximately $4.5 million on an annual basis. The significant differences between the annual capacity payment amounts is primarily attributable to the output capability of the proposed future generation resources of approximately 56 megawatts compared to the output of the existing generation resources of 35 megawatts and the efficiency rating differences of the two. The proposed agreement is beneficial and equitable to both the SUA and GRDA. Approval of the agreement will enable the SUA to continue to purchase wholesale power at low rates for another 29 years and to offset future costs by continuing to own and operate generation facilities. It is recommended that the trustees approve the power purchase and sell agreement by and between Grand River Dam Authority and Stillwater Utilities Authority effective as of September 1st, 2013. Now I can answer any and all questions and there's staff from GRDA here to ask any question, answer any questions that I can't.
I just, just one question.
Yes, sir.
We appreciate the advance information that we received at the last council meeting. As I understand and read the agreement, construction of a new generation facility isn't of itself a part of this agreement.
You're correct, sir.
We have the, the right to do so by this agreement, but we're not committed to that.
Yes, sir.
Right?
Yes, sir.
Good. Understand where we are.
From the first version of the contract that was given to us, then you said there was additional negotiations and some tweaks. This agreement incorporates those final negotiations?
Yes, sir.
This is quite possibly one of the most complex things I've ever read.
I agree.
At first, I thought you were just making up words.
I'm going to second what you just said.
Yeah, this is, this is some very complex, but I greatly appreciated the explanations that both you and Mr. Blankenship were able to give, explain how this is structured, what this, how it's structured is probably the best way to put it. And so it is, it's amazing that, I'm very glad we're at this stage.
Yes, sir.
These questions were going on before I even ran for city council. It's one of those.
You guys, the term come and go and still haven't added.
We had a term come and go, but it's one of those, I like where we are now. We couldn't, this agreement couldn't have happened four years ago.
Yes, sir.
Everyone is in a better spot now and we're able to accomplish something better now than if we'd just hauled off and signed a contract back in 2009, 2010.
Absolutely.
I agree.
And so while no one really likes delays, I, this is such a better, I, I like the partnership aspects so much more than where we were before.
Yes, sir. We agree completely.
Mr. Mayor, since GRDA reps are in the audience and may want all the trouble to come, could we ask them if they have any comments?
Lauren, would you introduce them, please?
Yes, sir. Carolyn, Carolyn Doherty, Dan Sullivan, Grant Burgett.
Appreciate you guys being here. Is there anything that you'd like to add or comment on or are we...
Did he get the deal right from your perspective?
We twisted him pretty hard, I don't know.
There's a few little amendments we'd like to make, if you don't mind.
What was I thinking? What was I thinking?
Back to the negotiation.
Thank you very much. I'm Dan Sullivan. I'm the CEO of Grand River Dam Authority. I've been there about 20 months now. I spent about 22 years before that practicing law in the city of Tulsa. And I can assure you that the terms and conditions of these contracts are different than any other that you'll see. And the first meeting of the Southwest Power Pool that I attended, I came out of there saying that I needed to get a new decoder ring to sift through all of the acronyms and all of the new terminology that's involved in this industry. But I can tell you that our relationship with the Stillwater Utility Authority is very valuable to GRDA and to all the rest of the customers that we have. And we look forward to that continued relationship to the year 2042. I, I personally want to thank Lauren and Dan Blankenship for all the time and effort. We feel like they've almost become part-time employees of ours, as much time as they've spent with our folks in negotiating all these. We haven't offered to make any payments on your behalf, but we sure do appreciate all the time and effort that they put into this because we do feel that this is... do feel that this is a very good, working relationship. Having the generation capacity on this end of our network and on the, the end of the grid that we manage is very valuable to us. So we, we thank you for your consideration of this, and we look forward to presenting it to our board on April, excuse me, August the 14th.
Mr. Mayor, if I might, I just want to thank you for, I don't believe the deal would be possible with it not for your leadership from GRDA, so I appreciate that.
Well, thank you. I appreciate it.
So your recommendation is still the recommendation that's in the report?
Yes, sir.
We approve the power purchase and sale agreement between Grand River Dam and SUA effective September 1, 2013.
Yes, sir.
Still staff's recommendation.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor?
And so we would authorize you to sign such an agreement, you the city manager?
Broken arm.
Okay.
Well, trustee, if it pleases the rest of the trustees, I would gladly and wholeheartedly move approval.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve staff's recommendation. And that is approved five to zero.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
I'm just glad I don't have to read this again.
The only word I understood in there was megawatt.
Okay. No further items on the SUA agenda. Is there a motion to adjourn SUA?
So moved. Second.
Motion and a second to adjourn SUA. Passed five to zero. SUA is adjourned. Takes us back, we'll reconvene city council and...
Executive session?
Is there a motion to move to executive session?
Yes, there is. Second.
Motion and a second for executive session. And that passes five to zero. We're in executive session.